Hereby open Board of Selectmen meeting, October 9th, 2018, at 6:00 PM at the Rutland Public Library. This meeting is being taped for live viewing on cable, for future viewing on the YouTube channel. If we could open our meeting by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Motion assigned Treasury Warrant 8 and Payroll.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have two sets of meeting minutes that I think technically we could approve them, but we can wait a few minutes. I think we have our other members showing up. And we can go straight into our 6 o'clock appointment, which is actually more of an update than an appointment, but I think there are people here from Rutland Soccer. This was mainly to just revisit a topic that we had, I want to say, three meetings back. Bob, it was right before, were you here the night we had that discussion?
I think so.
Yeah, so it might have been three meetings back. I just want to make sure we're all moving in the right direction. And I know you'd gotten an update on the whole hay situation, so why don't we start there?
Okay. Well, according to the file, it was five, almost five years ago, where the town put out a bid for the haying of approximately 25 acres. We had found the award letter, and we understand it's still being hayed. I guess get to the nub of the problem and the timeframe, it was intended to be a five-year agreement, and it was signed in April of 14, so according to the file, this would be a relationship with the high bidder that would go until this April, April of 2019.
So have we found anything from the old hay contracts? Is this all we have from any hay contract?
I think we're still looking for that, but as far as this particular parcel, I think we have what exists. There's no lease, for example, for the parcel. It was an agreement at the time, and as I mentioned, a five-year agreement.
I think the other thing, and I want to say you and I talked about it briefly, that had come up was whether or not, you know, one of the things that was on our list of sort of to-do items was obviously find out where we stood with the contract as it was at Glenwood, but also to get a sense of where our other possibilities were for haying, as well as for soccer fields. And Dick's not here. Very unusual. I know Dick looked into, Skip, you were here that night too. Dick looked into the back set section of Glenwood, and said, as we thought, even after he walked it, thought much of it was wetter even than he remembered, which makes me wonder if maybe that water has spread, and the wetland is bigger maybe than it was when we built the school, which is possible.
Probably the beaver.
Could be. Could be more than one beaver. Could be more than one beaver, yeah. I think the other thing that had come up, sort of anecdotally, and I don't know that we have any information on it, was whether or not any of the DCR state land was getting bid out for hay.
Well, I did.
I guess a bit of it. Next year is the bid for the DCR and...
Next year, not this year?
Next year, April, is up for bids again.
Land within the town of Rutland? Okay. Okay. So that's interesting, because we, somewhat off-topic, had, I got a random email. Did you forward this to me, or did I get it? I had it, you're looking at me blankly, I apologize. Oh, no, you sent it to me, that request for letters of support regarding state property? That's within town confines. I mean, it brings up a valid question, because basically they're saying that the pilot proceeds that come to the towns from the state when the state owns land aren't necessarily equal to the valuation when it comes to, right, per acre or whatever. So if they're haying land that they're not developing, they're going to make profit off of that, but they're not, well...
They don't make any profit.
They're not making any money off of it?
These are local farmers feeding, right, they're all, they're off of their own...
But the farmers are bidding this. The farmers are bidding and paying money to the state. Or are they?
For $50 for five years.
Is that what it is? Oh, all right. So it's just, so it's just a...
Barry Dam area and over there and other stuff.
So you've done it?
Yeah.
Okay.
But next year is not even going to be put out to bid. It's going to go out, from what I'm told, going to be out, put up for somebody to bid it as a unit, and the state pay them to do it.
And the state, who just...
I did, I spoke to DCR.
Can we, hold on one second, were you?
I was going to tell you that...
Name and address.
The...
Name and address.
Well, Randy Jordan, 51 Muscat Park Road. I'm sorry, wow, you felt like powerful of that. I'd do the same to you.
That's me.
The state property in Rutland, FYI, has been walked away from this year by Phil Stevens. So in turn, I believe it's available coming forward.
Just for this year, though?
Well, I don't know that.
Because they asked me tomorrow, and I said, "No, I can't even get my own done. It's too wet." Let's be real, you know that, Randy.
The typically, typically, what I used to do in the Rutland property down here, we had to bush hog. If we rented 50 acres, we had to bush hog 50 acres. There was no, and give them 50 bales of hay. There was no money, FYI, there was no money given from Jordan Farm to the state property. It's different every year, depends on how the bid goes, but there's no farmers fighting over those fields, because, you know, I know we want to exchange a field, but those quality of fields at the prison camps are not an apple, they're not an apple and an apple, just FYI.
No, I mean, I think we knew that, right? We knew that there were various qualities of hay fields, and it was sort of a question of what did we even have available to us that we didn't necessarily know about? I know that had come up. Okay, so if I understand correctly, there were fields, there are fields.
Yeah.
Haying is a generous term for what you're actually doing when you take on those fields?
That's right, I agree, yes, very.
Because the state's goal was to just keep them open, not necessarily hyperproductive, is that...
And there's limitations within the state because of that spotted turtle and the birds and everything else in there.
Okay.
Of your limitations of timing. Here in Rutland, we can cut these fields at our leisure, currently. We can cut those at our leisure and actually make potential good product out of it to feed a family of cows.
Okay.
In the state property, you have restrictions of when you can cut and when you can't cut, because of the hot season, and the quality of the product over there won't make a lot of milk on the product over there. Just F, you know, and the bid, the bid term is only five years, so the, over there, at the state property, so a Jordan farm isn't going to go in and making drastic improvements on that property. We're not here talking about that, we're just talking about a hayfield and a hayfield. What I'm saying is you don't have similar hayfields.
Do we know the acreage up at that, Steve?
What's in Rutland versus what's not in Rutland, I can't answer that, but...
Okay.
You're, I, it was 50 or 75 acres that we farmed in the prison camps.
75 at the prison camps in total?
But was it, was it in Rutland, or Hammerston, or Bear, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever my bid package was, Skip, back when we all bid it together. Chunk. It's a, it's a good chunk.
But you weren't getting 75 acres of hay out of it, you were lucky to get...
Oh, I was getting 75 acres, but you could eat the dirt off my shoe. I was making mulch out of it, I wasn't making feed.
Mulch, but you were getting, you were getting the acreage of it, just not a quality feed product.
That's a fair statement.
So you, Randy, you let her know that you cannot fertilize and you cannot lime.
Yep.
Is what I was told, with all the my got over there by the Barry Dam. Can't lime, can't fertilize.
Would they ever have let you do a cover crop, a clover, to raise the nitrogen levels, or no? Was that ever, did that ever come up?
Typically, you don't do a cover crop on hay ground.
Was that, you could overseed it?
You can overseed it. A cover crop typically goes on bare ground.
Oh, because then you'd till it under?
Refeed and so...
Which is why it's called a cover crop.
We did actually fertilize in the beginning years when we were there, Skip.
Yeah, way back before this new guy got in here.
Correct.
What new guy?
Guy that's not doing it anymore. The new forester.
Okay.
The one that's in charge, let's put it that way. I don't know if he's a forester or not.
So, okay, and the reason we're asking so many questions is just so we, right, we all, we wanted to know what our full deal here was. Because the other thing that came up, I think Diane mentioned it today to me, Bob, when I walked in, was one of our, one of our solar projects has some impact possibly on haying, is that right? The one that's off of Wheeler? Anyone? She felt like Dick Williams would know more about which location. So there's a solar project going in off Wheeler, but there's, we just have...
Where's that going?
I don't...
It's up by the, um...
Water Tower.
Yeah, by the Water Tower.
But there's no hayfields on Wheeler Road.
Not directly on Wheeler, but one of the, I don't know, she seemed to feel like...
It has to be Central Tree.
I was going to say, I feel like the Central Tree one.
Dickie has led me to believe in conversations that we have had that none of the hayfield, unless it's changed, none of the hayfields are going to be affected. And Mr. Williams had knee surgery, and he is incapacitated currently, so.
All right.
FYI, so.
Okay, I'm going back to DCR. So we think it's a five-year, it is a five-year contract? But something happened this year. It never got bid out.
No, no, this year, a farmer walked away.
A farmer walked away from the fifth year?
Phil Stevens from Barry took over the contract from me. And in turn, he chose to not do it any longer.
Stevens from Carter and Stevens?
Yeah.
Wow.
And in turn, in turn, he had some vandalism problems in there with equipment that he left there overnight, in there and other issues, so.
Is that why he walked away? Or he had vandalism after he walked away?
No, he had vandalism before he walked away.
Got frustrated.
And he really didn't need the surplus acres of that quality.
Okay, so walked away from contract.
So if you're going to, if, for the shortness of the story is, the farmer that's farming the fields in Rutland now, Mike, is not going to leave Rutland. But, you know, if you said, hey, no, no, I'm just using this as an example, I know where you're going.
Random Mike?
No, Mike, who currently has the bid for the fields now, the Rutland Fields, doesn't end until April of 19.
The guy from OKAM?
Yes.
OKAM Mike?
OKAM Mike, the farmer Mike, whatever you want to...
Okay.
If you said, hey, we're going to take these 10 acres away from you at Glenwood School, and we're going to give you 10 acres over to the prison camps?
No.
Which we can't do, but...
No, we could, yeah, I mean, no.
Rizour things have happened, but if that's what you're alluding to...
No.
It's not, you're saying apples and oranges on the quality, that is correct.
No, I think, Randy, what this was, and you know, this was one of our jobs, was to make sure that we were covering all our bases, right? Like, we don't necessarily know, I think Skip has the best handle of it, of how many acres of hay the town is in charge of and what's been happening to it, and listening to the story about what happened at the state and the condition of the hayfields there, to me, that sounds counterintuitive, at least from the state process. You'd think somebody would want to improve that, but it helps for us to know, within at least the town limits, what is out there, what the quality is, you know, because how would we know otherwise? I do think we need to continue to look into the Central Tree Road acreage, because that solar project is most likely headed to the town meeting warrant, special town meeting warrant. So that would be another situation of a possible loss. Okay. Do, Sean?
Yes, ma'am.
You're raising your hand.
Yes, I'd like to speak on behalf of Rutland U Soccer, if I may.
So I don't know that we left you with anything other than what? I mean, we had quite a bit of homework to do on our end to find out where we were...
And I had some homework to do on my end, which I...
You did?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'd like to speak on that, and it might make you, your decisions a little easier with that on the field.
Probably not.
Sean McLaughlin, 175 Barry Packs, the one, I know you wanted, Anderson, everything. I made copies of, um, the contract, well, not the contract, the bid that went out for the haying. And the Glenwood field is not in the area that is to be contracted for hay. So I don't know if you want to take a look at these, I can hand them out to you.
So the field you'd like to use is not under contract, so what have we been talking about the last couple of meetings?
Well, that's the homework I did, and I found out, and I was like, it's pretty simple, because that field isn't supposed to be being, uh, hayed.
Does somebody currently hay on it?
Currently, um, he stated the OKAM Mike is currently haying on that, and this is for the approximately 25 acres on Mashbat, Mash...
Marshpug.
Mashbat Pog, um, watershed. And if you look at the maps from DCR and the town, Glenwood doesn't fall next to the watershed. It's not even on the watershed, so therefore, it's not supposed to be, that this contract isn't even for that area. So therefore, it's null and, the hay for that area is null and void in my eyes.
You want to hear that?
Through the contract.
The same thing you found.
I have the type of, you know, the maps and everything, but that isn't even watershed area. Matter of fact, it's the Weir wa, part of that land that Glenwood is on is on the Weir watershed.
But it's the same thing that references approximately 25 acres in the Mashpat Pog area. Yeah.
Right.
Which actually references more along lines of what we were talking about on the...
Wheeler Road area is more, is that watershed area. And it goes on to Jordan Farm. So it's kind of, to me, it makes it simple, because it's, it's not supposed to be hayed, so therefore, it's pretty easy to say, okay, well, then we can put it out to bid for the soccer fields.
Who do I want? Can you, can you come up, take a look at this?
He, he already, who?
You've seen it? Have you seen this, Randy?
Mr. Jordan, he's aware of it.
He's aware?
Yes, and he knows that it's not in the watershed area, from what I, what I've been told. Because he's actually just recently learned of it, as far as I know.
Question.
Yeah.
Through the chair. So you have one, two, three attachments in here.
Yes.
Are these attachments related, because it doesn't say on the cover sheet, to this cover sheet from the superintendent?
Yes, that's the, that's the, that went out for bid. That's the, the other paperwork is from the state, DCR and the watershed.
So the original document that goes out for bid here has three things underneath it. Was this part of...
No.
Okay, so...
No, that wasn't.
So this printout here that you have with the circle of Muscat Pog, this was printed out, well, it's probably got a date on it.
This is from DCR.
All right, so this...
We want to know if this was part, is this part of the cover sheet?
It's dated last week.
No.
Okay.
That's the research, this is from the town. This went out to bid.
No, I understand.
This is the stuff that I researched and found out.
All right, good.
It's not part of the watershed area.
So the two separate, two separate...
Right, so therefore, it's not even, they're not even supposed to be haying on that land, because it's not even part of a contract.
Yeah, Randy.
Just clarification on this, way back when, when that bid sheet was put out.
2014.
20, 20 years ago, you know, just talking about history. It was originally two fields, one right by the pumping station and one behind the power station. And in turn, part of that field behind the power station is not owned all by the town of Rutland. Some of it is owned by Randy Erickson. We have that property line, it's been dumped out. That was the original bid. After the school came into play of things. Over time, it evolved, that there was hayfields there, and the school couldn't be built on it, and something had to be happened to it. So it became assumed, assumed would be a fair word to say that, I believe it was Mr. Kelleher at the time says, hey, whoever wins the bid over there also gets that there, and that was assumed under it of all the time. Is it physically spelled out there? No, it's not. If you look at the revised bid contract that the Ad Commission has been working on, and I believe the Selectmen have a copy of it, correct, Debbie?
The town clerk has a copy.
I'm sorry, the town clerk has a copy of a revised bid, and we, the Ad Commission, specifically spelled out the three parcels of land stating the Glenwood School to revise it, because that...
For the upcoming season.
Right, and if you look at that, if you look at that lease thing, there are some things on there that are fairly dated in regard to agricultural practices.
Okay.
So what I'm saying is, there's a lot of assumptions going on there, we don't have a signed lease, it's just an awarded contract. He is absolutely correct.
Contract is a contract, though.
Okay, but...
We don't have a contract.
So Sean, if we based our decisions on what you're saying now, we'd be in all kinds of trouble all over town.
How's that?
You name it, Marshfield, I, I think the list is probably long and illustrious. Like, there are things that happened, say, back in the day, and processes change, and we have more information, we know how to do things better, so...
I understand.
The bottom line, what we have in front of us is, this has been hayed.
But that's...
Actively, and somebody paid to hay it. Now, we don't have a lease, we are fully aware that we don't have a lease. But we do have...
This was in 2014.
Right, for five years.
For five years.
Yeah.
And Kelleher didn't know, the superintendent didn't know of the Mashbat, the area... Mashpat Pog, wetlands area. He didn't know about that. I talked to him about it, and I told him, you know, I said to him, listen, this state says it's supposed to be in that area, and Glenwood isn't in that area. Then recently, the Ad Commission is trying to put that in, so I feel that it's just...
Even if it is, it expires in April.
Right.
Yeah.
If it is, right, if it was included in what you're talking here.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, Sean, the bottom line is, we are looking for, we are looking to try to figure out whether or not to change the use of a parcel. I don't know that how the paperwork looks matters at this point. It's been hayed for a while, and we've taken money to let somebody hay it. So, and we can't find the lease, shame on us. I'd love to see old leases, because obviously, we, to say we can't find one lease from five years ago, I just want to see any lease. You must have had, well, somebody's got to have a lease somewhere. If only if we could see what it looked like.
There's not a lease.
It was always just an agreement, an award letter with nothing, yeah. And see, moving forward, you know, to your point of whatever you guys are working on, we, we need to up our game as we're, you know, as we're just, as things get more complex in a town, I mean, it's...
Oh, I understand, and also having a lot more kids in town and active sports, and Rutland U Soccer doesn't have fields that they can play on.
So I...
And that's why we're looking to try to get something.
So Sean, I don't, all due respect, and I don't, I can't speak for everybody, I don't think there is any question that anyone in town doesn't recognize the need for more playing field space across multiple sports. I don't think there's many people in town who would say the same about conserving farmland. We just need to make a decision about whether, from a town perspective of what we own, what the future use is for that particular parcel, that's it. That's all, I, you're right? Like, I, I don't think it...
No, I understand.
I don't think it diminishes what you want to do, it doesn't, you know...
Well, there's, I'm sure there's other areas that they can hay. I mean, I'm not against the farmers either. It's, there's other parcels off of Wheeler Road, or in that vicinity that the town owns that possibly they could hay.
Right, and that's part of what we're doing, so our homework has been to try to get a really good handle on what the parcels are, what the quality of the hay is. You know, obviously, we don't have any say over what the state does, but we do know it's, in some cases, within our bounds, and, you know, can we help advocate for the farmers who might be more interested in hayfields out at the state property, which is huge, if only they could make it more viable? Is that with a longer lease? Is that with the ability to fertilize? We don't, we don't, you know, that's the first I've heard of that. I don't know the answer to that yet. And that's long-term, too. The question about, for both parties really, is very long-term. We know we have more kids in town, we also know we're losing farmland at an ever-increasing rate, and it seems like none of the farms have been conserved, even for open space for hay. We've lost multiple parcels that, you know, in another community might have had conservation restrictions on them and agricultural restrictions and APRs, and we don't have that, so we've got to...
I understand. I'm just thinking it's a viable area for soccer fields, and if not, then the Heights would be a perfect place, so I bring it to you, to the board. One or the other would suit fine, you know?
But they're both legitimate conversations.
You know, I mean...
Yeah, yeah.
We need to do something, and do something soon. I mean, my son plays soccer, he hasn't been able to play because the field at Central Tree, the lower Central Tree, is flooded. They've had to cancel practices. He went out, they had, at school today, he had to go on the upper field because the lower field was so bad. And that's after Rutland U Soccer spent a lot of money putting sod and everything down already this year. So these are the things that we're running into, and I just feel that the town needs to do something to help, you know, the athletics and the children out. And it seems like we're not getting anywhere. It's been way too long.
All right, thank you. So I, I don't know that we've made enough progress to make a decision tonight. I mean, we've got some answers, but not all.
I see both sides, but...
We have a request in front of us, we have land use issues in front of us that are expiring at some point in the near future. So obviously, it's discretion of the board, Skip, I know the last time you had recused, but...
Just curiosity, where are we at with mowing down some of these lovely trees that were up there at the Rutland Heights? That chunk of land we got up there, and making fields, soccer fields or whatever for them up there?
But nobody wants to do that unless they can secure it with some sort of reasonable lease that's, they're not going to do the time and the money.
Well, we were talking, we talked about cutting the trees down and taking that money from what we made...
Behind Glenwood.
Yeah, but on any other properties in town.
Right, but that gets, but that gets back to having that full list of the parcels that we own in town, right?
Yeah, but that one up there was mentioned, I do believe, mentioned up there by the Central Tree, and that chunk of land up there, and that's right local, and it's high.
That's going to be hayable forever, because you're not going to build on that, that's clearly the watershed. Two parcels.
No, I think, Skip, you're talking about the piece on...
Hold on one second.
Skip, you're talking about the piece that's conserved, right, that the Land Conservancy manages?
No, I'm talking about the piece that we can't cut any trees on, because the school's got to have their, they have botanist trails and whatever.
So the piece behind Central Tree School?
Yeah.
That's adjacent to the Heights?
Yeah, that's town property.
Yeah, some of it is wet, but...
Not much of it. Because it all drains back towards Jerry Kristoff's property.
You know, the land is currently for sale, I mean, there's a sign out front that says 88 acres for sale. No one's going to want to invest.
Yeah, but I'm not even talking that land. I'm talking the chunk of land between that and the school, where you go down the driveway on the left side.
It's a flat?
I felt when Dick had the forester come in and said that the space behind Glenwood was mostly wetlands, and behind Glenwood, I thought he also said, I can't remember, that, that the Central Tree piece was...
There was not marketable lumber, a lot of, a lot of marketable lumber is what he said.
I couldn't remember if it was marketable lumber, or if it was also very wet and not a lot of usable space. I don't remember.
This year, every, every place is wet this year, but...
Yeah.
I see both issues, I see both sides. Question is, you know, what's in the best interest of the town moving forward? It's unfortunate that we have had hayable fields and farms that are now subdivisions. So, you know, that's a separate, separate issue that the soccer folk shouldn't be punished for. So what is in the best interest of the town? Because that's prime real estate right next to a school, that they said that would be available and afforded to the school. That needs to be taken into consideration. You'd be raising the equity of that school property itself, you know, over, how many acres are we talking, eight acres? Eight acres, so, I mean, in the overall scheme of things, eight acres is not a large amount of hayable land in there. So I think if we took a step back, regardless of whether you're a farmer background or a soccer background, and you sit in the seats that we're here, we are seated in here, you know, what's in the town's best interest with eight acres of town-owned land? Is it to make it a recreation field for, for youth that can benefit the school, or continue to use that as hayable fields? Well, you know what, were these same conversations taking place when we were giving out building permits, like Necco wafers, you know, for new houses to come in and take over the Watts Farm, which I feel, which I hated myself when I was a kid? So trying to be that impartial person of what is in the best interest of the town, I think the soccer, the soccer movement has a viable point. I think that would probably be, for that, those eight acres would be in the best interest to make those eight acres recreational space that the town would still own, so, as unfortunate as it is. So I'd be willing to make a motion and then let the board vote as it, as it will, to try to get this moving forward, one way or another. We've met on this issue three times, four times. I think it's time to, to take a side and, and vote.
So just to clarify what we'd be voting on, we'd be voting on use of a portion of that parcel. We know, we know that eight acres is an estimate, but we, we have not and would not yet see anything that's been engineered or surveyed. So, you know, it could be 8.5... So, you know, it could be eight point five, it could be seven point three, whatever. You know, we also committed at the last meeting to continuing to discover where we stand relative to preservation of some of our agricultural lands. I think that's an ongoing process that we can do parallel, parallel to this. Um, I think where we left it last time, too, was that nobody was going to be able to make a lot of forward movement until we, as a board, decided where that land was headed. Was it going to stay hay? In which case, you've got to work that into some new documentation that we'll end up using, hopefully, in the next bid process. Um, is a portion of it going to go over to soccer, at which point they at least then have that leave to move forward because we wouldn't be putting any finance into it. They'd have to be doing all that prep work themselves. And I, and I understand sort of-
They need to, they need to have some, some vision, whether it's, it's going to be-
Yeah.
A green light or not. Or, or we could take a, take it in parcels and agree as a board to send a notice to Mark from HoCam that, hey, we, we may have other intentions come April, when your non-lease lease expires. At least put him on notice that, that we don't, we don't seek to, uh, get more bids on that particular eight-acre parcel. Or we can just move forward and be done with this.
Just, I'm sorry, I keep asking the same questions. The award letter is dated, what? So, do we have the award letter?
Um, I don't have the exact date, but it was April of fourteen.
It was April of fourteen, but this document is dated June of fourteen.
Right.
Okay, and so I think we talked at one point about whether or not, uh, Becky's office would have confirmation of payment and whether twenty-fourteen was included. Do we, do we know, maybe in the room, know if fourteen was included for a hay year? Fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, because then that would be already five years versus nine, right? Or maybe it was split, and maybe he got one haying out of it. It's a tough call.
It sounds to me like, I mean, based on the informa-, unless somebody else has evidence, I guess if you could call it that, to, uh, provide, it was kind of like a verbal agreement that this was somehow attached to-
Yeah.
The Mushka Pog, Central Tree area.
Yeah.
Okay, if you can, if you can hay that, then you can hit this area, too, right down the road, but-
No, I agree. It was an award letter. I think it was generalized. We certainly didn't do any formal surveying. There is no, there's no maps or assessors' maps attached at all to it.
We've beat a dead horse here. I think if there was such a document, it would surface by now.
Yeah.
We don't have it, so let's just assume that all things, verbal or otherwise, are going to expire in April of next year. What's going to happen on April second of next year with the eight acres of land? Let's make a decision.
Uh, there were some questions out there, so I'll take them before we make the motion. Were you raising your hand or just stretching?
I was raising my hand.
No, not you.
Me?
Yeah, you. No? Okay, now, I know you were raising your hand. Go ahead. Name and address.
All right. Ken Lebatkin, sixty-two Wheeler Road, also a vice president for Rutland Soccer. Um, and I just wanted to kind of add on, I think, to some of the points that, that the board was making with use of that land. There are currently other soccer fields nearby. There's one at the back of the Glenwood School, there's one at the community center. And by adding fields to this general area, it would make that whole area, you know, more useful, like, kind of a one-stop shop for, for soccer. Again, the use for the school, we'd be looking to put in fifty to a hundred parking spaces with it, which, as we all know, when there's school events going on, it's very hard to get in and out of that school. Not to say that would, um, rectify all of that, uh, but hopefully, at least keep one side of the road open for emergency vehicles to get in if there was an emergency. Um, but again, keeping everything together. Also having that use for the school, um, and to me, and I think to the Rutland Soccer Board, you know, having the soccer fields, having the kids activities goes right along with, you know, in line with having that school there. Some kind of, uh, mentality. So, for us, it makes sense to keep it there versus somewhere in town. Right now, our fields are spread out. Um, as Sean was saying, even, um, you know, the, the fields, as we all know, are mixed use. Um, Naqog Field, for instance, we canceled practices the last couple of weeks because of rain. Uh, the middle school still uses it for field hockey, um, and because of that, the field was so torn up that we actually had to cancel not just practices, but games which are scheduled with teams from other towns, which we don't schedule, but go through, uh, mass youth soccer, and makes it more difficult to reschedule those because the field conditions were ripped up and muddy and, and just you step on it, and water was coming up through the mud because of the use during, during that rain. So, you know, we can't control every, obviously, like, like baseball and all other sports. We can't, we can control when we use the fields, but not other folks, and, and that kind of causes not only damage, but it also causes us to cancel and change, and, I mean, these kids look forward to this. It's a, it's a short window. Um, you know, Septe-, you know, end of August, September, October, um, maybe the beginning of November, so it's a short window for them, and they get a lot of enjoyment out of it. Um, we had our first opening day this year, which we've never done, and brought a lot of Rutland U-Soccer together on one day, one field. Um, there's been a lot of positive feedback from that for us. And this, again, would add to that, and, you know, the availability and the opportunities for us to do things like that.
I guess my question to the board, and maybe to AgCom also, is if we turn this over to soccer, what can, how can we work as a town to better preserve, be more proactive in preserving farmland that is coming up and looked, being looked at as other uses? I mean-
Stop official permits to, to build.
Well, ha, it's a fair question. Has the Agricultural Commission ever taken a role in trying to advocate for APR land on somebody's deed, or have made any headway in that respect?
We've made education to people that are considering to sell open space and encourage them and put them in touch with APR.
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
Sean, this plan?
Yes, that's, that's my drawing of what we'd like to get out of that land.
And this is right on, it's adjacent to Glenwood?
It's, it's the front parcel at Glenwood.
Can I give this to the board? It has a better draw, uh, more, better rendering of that.
It abut, it abut, it's right on Glenwood. It abuts Glenwood.
Yes, yes, sir.
But then, that wouldn't even be on this parcel.
No, that's, that's what I'm saying.
He was, he was trying to make a statement about the bid sheet.
About the bid, because the bids for that area and Glenwood's not even in that area.
Randy, what about the, I'm sorry, I, I, anybody can answer this, I just, um-
Thank you.
This, when we get the six UNAs, Agricultural Commission is one of the agencies, one of the committees that we ask for response. I mean, so, you, you know, you and I have been doing this for a while. Over the six UNAs that we've lost, was there any? Ha, have you been in a position to advocate for conservation restriction, for agricultural restriction, APR? I guess I'm maybe thinking ahead a little bit. What happens when the next one comes up and we have another six UNA that might have viable hayfields on it? What should we be doing better? We might not have had the money ten years ago. Maybe we will.
Typically, in our tenure of the Ag Commission doing it, usually, it's the eleventh hour that we are notified in official capacity of the Ag Commission to, because the town of Rutland has, what, ninety days or a hundred and twenty days to do it? But sometimes, we have less than thirty days on our end, once we've been notified of the situation of a sixty-one A coming up. So, in turn, we, unless of official capacity, we haven't done anything in, in what you regarded to that, other than us as members going out and speaking to the individuals during the process. We have done nothing. I, as an individual member, have an idea of something that I don't know if I can pull the rabbit out of the hat. That's a different subject. In regards to, like, when the Davis property down here was, was taken out of sixty-one A and back taxes were paid. There's some sort of formula that I haven't quite figured out, but I'm sure someone smarter than me can figure out that the back taxes have to be paid on that agricultural property because there's a savings on sixty-one A, right? So, where's that money go? That money goes back into the General Treasury.
Yeah.
I, as an individual, not as a board, would love to see that back taxes that Jimmy Susi paid on that agricultural property down there for sixty-one A to be put into a separate account. Whatever it is, whether it's ten thousand, a hundred thousand, whatever that money is, okay, and back taxes, that goes into a pool of money that sits over here in the general government budget, and all of a sudden, Jordan Farm wants to sell, you know, a parcel of land for whatever. And in turn, it's going to cost you a hundred thousand dollars to do it. Now, the town of Rutland has money sitting in a pool for money like that. It can just take it out. Whether you can do that legally or differently, I'm not a hundred percent certain.
I'm, I'm not sure about the sixty-one A, but Bob, he's talking about a conservation fund, which is typically funded by a community when a development is being built. They have a percentage that gets put in, right? That's what he's talking about.
The town of, the town of Holden-
Right.
I spoke to some of their Ag Commission members, my neighbor. They put in fifty or a hundred thousand dollars a year into a-
Yeah.
A fund just to buy agricultural property when it comes available. We're not in a current position to do that, okay? I'm trying to create money that's coming into the town unexpectedly, like, like the Jim Susi by, you know, paying that back taxes, or the Davis family paying the back taxes on that sixty-one A to do it for someone else's parcel.
I don't know that we're not in a position to do it. We had two years where we had almost a million dollars in free cash, and some of that money went into three different savings funds, and some of it went to OPEB. And, you know, is there an appetite for the people who attend town meetings to start putting money away into a conservation purchase fund? There are plenty of communities that have it.
Is that something that the board can set up?
Probably, yeah.
I don't even have to go to town.
It takes one of the soccer fields. I'm pissed.
Okay.
I am, too.
All right.
That's true.
There's somebody else. More?
One comment for you just to think about. Jeffrey's motion is a valid motion.
He hasn't made it yet. He hasn't made anything yet.
I haven't made it yet.
We're still-
One thing that you four up there have to think about, a long time ago, you asked for letters or comments in regards to the fields coming out of there.
Yep.
While the Ag Commission is pushing it, nothing against soccer. Let's just make that very extremely clear that the Ag Board is not against soccer. We're about protecting farmland. We weren't the only person that wrote a letter of concern about those parcels of land. If I'm not mistaken, you have seven other letters that are, have concerns with those coming from hayfields to soccer fields, Planning Board, the B Association. You, you had, you had seven letters in front of you that all had concerns.
We definitely had the, um, the birds.
The Planning Board's not in favor of this.
Did planning, I think we had RDIC, or not RDIC, conservation, not-
The Rutland Conservancy.
So, I'm just saying, before you take a vote, you may want to just consider the other thought. Take, take us farmers out of it and put the other six people in there, those shoes that may not be here to advocate for themselves tonight.
We have a letter from the Planning Board that says they're, they're against this proposal.
That wasn't in our first packet.
You could take those six letters and read those. I also have signature, over two hundred signatures for the fields to be put at Glenwood. I've had a petition go around, so, I mean, we could go around all day long with different things.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not, it's not a popularity vote. It's a vote of what's the best issue.
Right, for the kids in the town, and that's why these parents all, you know, signed to have the fields put there. For the best thing for the school and the town.
I'd like to, uh, refresh my memory with the Planning Board's letter, if one, if one exists.
I'm looking through the emails. I know it's-
I don't, I don't even have anything on it.
Archives here.
I can go home, too. I got stuff to do. I mean, I recall the letters. I don't recall it, an opinion by the Planning Board on the matter.
I was told this. I did not see a letter.
Oh.
No, no, no. No, no, they said they were given a letter by the Planning Board members. I mean-
Well, why would the Planning Board even, they don't even know the-
There was traffic, there was traffic concerns. It wasn't necessarily pro-hay. It was the traffic concerns with soccer and other things, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, the, the letter from the Planning Board asked that we investigate other opportunities, and I think that was a well-founded request of, obviously, we shouldn't be jumping in.
Yeah, that's not saying that it's-
Okay, what, it's been four months.
It's been months, and we've looked at it, and we can-
Okay.
Okay, so that's what it says.
That's, yeah, they, uh-
It doesn't say we're opposed to it. It says, hey, go ahead and-
That there might have been other parcels.
We may have faith in that.
We say that, too.
Yeah.
I mean, this board says that, too.
All right. Forty minutes. What do we want to do?
Wow. It's like almost a soccer game by now. I know.
Practices will-
Anybody else want to be on the field? Make sure everyone speaks their mind. Anybody else want to say?
Name and address.
Glenn Cogle, one twenty-six Main Street. Um, I am a member of the Agricultural Board, but my one question is, there's sign out on fifty-six for eighty-eight acres for sale, owned by the town of Rutland. Why can't we find soccer space, uh, space for fields on that eighty-eight acres? I just don't, I don't think it's been investigated enough. It's not going forward any other direction.
No, that's a fair question, because it absolutely is one of the possibilities. So, just so you know, it has been investigated at great length, three times so far, going in two different directions. And it's really funny, and I, I can honestly say, I think the majority of people I talk to who say if they ever won the lottery, one of the first things they would do is buy that property and turn it into a public park that didn't just have soccer fields or a baseball field, but it had fishing opportunities and trails for walking and a senior center. There's grand visions for that beautiful property, and I wish we could make those all happen. The legislation states that we must make money off that property. So, when you see that for sale sign on fifty-six, it's because the RDIC, who is legislatively tasked with managing that property's future, has made it a priority to develop it. Now, does that mean it can be developed partially, and then with some of that burden taken off the town, we do still have a half a million dollars that we owe on it, that maybe we can look at keeping other parts of it open? I hope so. But it's a question for the RDIC, and unfortunately, not really for us at all. It, it puts an extra level of limitation on using that parcel, but I agree with you. It's a wonderful location.
Were some of the limitations, probably a question for the RDIC, but wasn't recreation part of that plan?
It is absolutely part of the plan, but again, legislatively, they feel, a- and, you know, they are their own, their own board. They feel that their primary focus, as indicated by the letter of legislation, is to first pay off that loan and develop that property and offset the tax, the tax rate with some commercial development. I can't, we can't fault them for that. It was one of the reasons why the last proposal that actually went fairly far that included development of fields, I think it might have been baseball, um, right on Maple Avenue, we actually, as a board, kind of had no to, because if we're going to develop the parcel commercially, one of the things that a commercial developer is going to look for is frontage, road frontage. That's a different discussion, but that, I, but I, yeah, it's a, it's a valid question. It's absolutely a valid question.
There's no flat land left of Central Tree Middle School? Town-owned flat land?
Um, wha, I don't have a map in front of me. When you look at the Central Tree parcel, um, there's land to one side that could be developed for more parking. Obviously, there's massive roadway improvements that need to happen. There's the parcel in between Naqog and, um, Central Tree, which has a bit of undeveloped space to the back of it. Not a ton, but, but some. And then there's the parcel after Central Tree on its way to the Rutland Heights. That's where the fence line is. Some of that is flat, some of it is not. Um, there's the possibility of, well, there's a teacher at Central Tree who's identified like a virtual pool. There are issues there, but, you know, to Skip's point, it's not all wet. It's sloped. It's not all flat. It's not, it's not perfect. By any stretch. Certainly, the parcel, as you're heading more into the Heights, is more conducive.
Just want to try to cut out any other options. Sean, did you take a look at any of the area between Naqog and Central Tree Middle School? Anything possible there?
I want to, I do a lot of, like I said, I have all the town-owned parcels, and there, most of them are wetlands, or there's a lot of trees that need to come down, which wouldn't be viable.
So, you've, you've researched the town-owned parcels?
That's what I said. I have the lists here. The board would like to look at it.
So, there's nothing else that you're pitching, no other piece of land that jumped out at you?
No, nothing that would work, and it would be central, and it would be beneficial to the school or more of the town.
All right. Yeah.
Good.
Okay.
Just to claim an edit.
Jesse, claim one sixty-six Main. How much are you proposing it's going to cost in terms, to what your proposed idea is with building the parking lot and everything down there going to cost you?
Where at? The Glenwood? Right now, for, um, we got a proposal from an engineer, just to do the drawings and the surveying and everything, was almost twenty thousand just for that. And then, you know, excavation and everything, we're going to be looking for builders in town, who are a nonprofit organization, to help out with the- who are nonprofit organizations, to help out with the building of the facility.
So what do you estimate your total cost, including parking lots and everything?
I have no idea, because it all depends on what, what we have to put out, you know what I mean? If the contractors are going to do everything.
Let's say, take out the, let's say the contractors aren't going to do it for free. Obviously, I mean, they have to make money, their business, right, or get one else.
Well, no, I mean, we've had, no, we've had contractors offering to do the stuff. Just like with baseball.
Galloway?
Galloway, I didn't, I don't have my gavel tonight.
Here's your phone.
All right. I, I came into this for an update. Is it something new?
Well, just a point that was brought up here a moment ago. You talked about RDIC.
Yep.
And the Rutland Heights.
Yep.
Right? Correct me if I'm wrong, isn't all town property owned, controlled and managed by RD, or supposed to be, RDIC?
Oh, really, Randy? Is that, that your question?
Yes, it is. It's never been talked about over here at the county school, but if you have open space.
You're saying we're at the wrong board?
No.
No, what I'm, what I'm saying is.
Randy, I find it interesting that that theory has come up only recently. And that has never come up before, including among the original members of the RDIC. And I would say, no, I don't believe.
Okay, just to point out, just.
On record. Okay.
I'll make a motion just to, to force a vote.
Okay, you don't have to, you don't have to make a motion to force a vote. If you want to make a motion to do something with the property, one way or the other, you can make that motion.
Well, it's nothing individual about it. It's.
Okay.
Best interest of the, the school and the area.
All right, go ahead, make your motion.
Anything else?
Well, that's okay, we can still have a conversation.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion. I will make this motion. The town allowed the Rutland Youth Soccer, permission to proceed with a soccer field proposal to construct soccer fields on eight acres, approximately eight acres of town-owned, open land, roughly located east of Glenwood Elementary School, in between Glenwood Road. Referenced in the Rutland Youth Soccer Field Proposal, two thousand eighteen, numbers U-ten, comma, U-twelve, comma, U-fourteen, and H-S in their proposal. End of motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it. Although I'd probably abstain from the vote.
Well, you gotta do one or the other.
No, I can second it if you don't measure. And I can abstain, when you take the vote, I can abstain.
Okay.
Who says I can't?
Okay.
I say you can, Scott.
All right.
I say you can.
Okay.
Can't. No, I can, sure. Second.
Friendly amendment. Um, I think we would probably all like to see the final plans prior to moving forward. Can we add that in?
The motion was to allow permission to proceed.
Yes.
With their soccer field proposal.
Proposal.
And, and your friendly amendment, say it again.
Well, I think the question is, they're not going to go and spend, if this is the way we're headed, they're not going to go and spend twenty thousand dollars thinking they might not get this land. On the other hand.
Right.
I would want to see a final proposal prior to them. I'd like to, I'd like, the town needs to be involved, it's town-owned.
Subsequent to final proposal and, is it the board approval, or we're going through?
Well, this is going to be an RFP process, just like Marshfield. So we're going to release an RFP.
Okay.
Yeah.
Subject to an RFP?
Yeah, lease and lease agreement.
And lease agreement?
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
But the town's intentions have been spoken.
Okay.
With this motion on what these guys can, can do.
And I had a second. Is there any discussion on the board? Are there any comments on the motion?
No.
Okay, we did talk about it for an hour. Uh, all in favor?
Stollings, aye.
Aye.
Are you abstaining?
I'm going to abstain.
Um, three ayes. All opposed? And one abstention. Okay. Yeah, all right.
Thank you very much. Thank you both sides.
Is there anybody here for public comment that has nothing to do with soccer? Paul.
Just want to take a quick minute to say thank you for, to everybody for coming together to clear up the problem that's been in existence here outside the door. It looks like it's going to hold up very well, and it's been very well put together, and so on and so forth, so. Judging by the weather, we may get a chance to find out before the end of the week, but I don't know, that, that's still up in the air. But again, I just want to say thank you for everybody coming together.
So far, so good? Knock on wood, so far, so good?
So good.
Okay.
Everything seems to be okay so far, but we haven't had really a serious rain yet. In other words, you know, we've had a couple of good ones, and if it comes, I'll come up here and sit and watch for a while, but we'll see what happens.
Well, thank you, Paul.
Thanks, thanks for keeping us on our toes.
Thank you and your team for the good work on the cable. Doing a good job.
Bob, finally your turn.
Okay.
Uh, the first item on the DPW search, I've been in contact with Alan Gould, and he wrote that, um, I think it's next Monday, where the, uh, period for submitting resumes, the advertising period will end. He thinks that they can get through the process that he just, um, had described, through the, um, essay questions and interviews in a couple of weeks. I think he's expecting that he should be able to get, um, finalists to the board, um, about the first, first week in November.
Did he give any feedback on how it's looking?
Um, he said that he had about eleven applicants to this point, but it's been his experience that it's usually at the very end that, uh, that they start coming in. So I think he's expecting to get a few more.
Excellent.
So then obviously it will depend on, you know, how much, what the process will be here, how much that person will need to give as far as notice, et cetera, before they're able to actually start.
And this might not be something we need to talk about right now, but I thought when he was here, he had mentioned that especially for DPW, that, um, compensation packages and everything tend to be a factor. Does he feel that our compensation package is competitive enough? Or is, does he feel that that's a hindrance? Or did he not provide any of that feedback?
Um, if he did mention that, I don't remember. I know he did comment on the town administrator search, he made a comment there, but I'm sure the board's memory is better than mine. I don't remember him making a comment about the DPW.
It could have just been across the board, you know, these searches in general.
He did say that about the administrator.
Yeah.
I don't know, for Sam, we're some, one of the subject matter experts, I think we should talk about that at some point too.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and then on the town administrator search, um, I think, um, well, Abby's been handling setting up the appointments for when Mr. Lynch comes to the town on the sixteenth. Um, I think there are only just a couple of vacancies left at, at this point. If you, um, haven't contacted her yet about setting up an appointment, then, uh, you know, we can certainly do that. The, the public forum will be here in this room on the sixteenth at six-thirty. And, um, you know, I think Bernie will be welcoming the attendance of anyone and everyone to make their comments about the town administrator position. And he wants to open up the process as much as possible, aside, obviously, from talking to the selectmen and various department heads that he asked to have appointments with. He's going to be here the better part of the day on the sixteenth.
Great.
Um, on the special town meeting, as you know, the closing of the warrant is going to be on the eighteenth. Uh, I do have a few articles in to this point. I think the bulk of the articles, uh, right now, the way it looks, the bulk of the articles for the town meeting will be from the planning board. They're discussing not only the road acceptances requested have come in, but also, um, the potential for several articles regarding marijuana, um, its uses, whether it'll be prohibited in town, et cetera. They're having a forum on that on the twenty-third, which will be, um, I think, after the selectmen's last meeting, prior to the warrant having to be posted. Um, so something to consider, whether you want to consider a, a special meeting, both to go over the warrant requests that have come in and, um, potentially how to handle or in what order, which is also a factor, what order to put the marijuana articles in or, or any of the articles.
So they, they've already, would have written the proposed marijuana bylaw before the forum to hear of what to do about the bylaw.
Um, they do have a draft of a bylaw that's gone to council to be reviewed.
When do we get to see it?
Um.
We could see it.
Yeah.
Can you send it over?
I'll take care of that.
Now what, sorry, to the chair.
Yep.
What, uh, what input, if any, does, does the board have on the proposed? I know we have, we have control of what goes into the warrant, but what input do we have? Is this a draft, um, that they're setting that's subject to some revisions?
So, the way most communities have been handling it is to sort of give themselves a safety net, and there's different ways of doing that. The worst-case scenario is that recreational marijuana sales pass without any zoning bylaws in place, which would leave you at the mercy of just the state framework, which is fine, but it's probably not what an individual community wants. So right now, they have something like a nine-page, is that fair? I think it's a nine-page zoning document that everybody should be taking a look at, and I'm sure there would be extended conversation at town meeting, should it get to that point. The discussion right now is, do you do the quote "safe" warrant article first? As in, you set the zoning just in case, because you just don't know where it's going to go? Do you then go to a bylaw that may also be zoning, um, where it's a straight yes-no? Uh, or do you go to a general bylaw, which can also be a straight yes-no, but the bar is lower?
Right, so, I mean, I want to see what, what are they pushing?
My understanding was that they were, and I don't, I could be wrong, because I think it's progressed since I last had an understanding of it, is that they were kind of going to do a, a menu option, and so present, I think, similar to, you know, present an overall and then see how the votes go and have a next case.
Yeah.
Pending the outcome of this vote.
It's less menu and more stepping stones.
Yeah.
Well, if, if this, then this.
Yeah, I guess that's.
It's more like that.
My concern is, so when's our next meeting?
So I think, our next meeting is the twenty-second. I think we need to.
After the warrant's closed.
Well, no. We closed the warrant to everyone submitting, but we are able to place warrant articles right up until pretty much Halloween week.
Can we amend what they've submitted?
Can we amend what they've submitted? We never really have.
What if, I mean, we don't know where they're coming from. What if they propose something that's to be on the warrant for town meeting that's left field to us? And we're getting, we're doing this five days after the.
Well, so, okay, let's, let's do one thing first. The easy part is, I think we should plan to have a special board's select meeting on the twenty-ninth to button up any articles, including these. Uh, we may not have numbers, we may have questions, whatever. There's a lot happening on the twenty-third, uh, there's road acceptances that are progressing, so that gives us a little bit of extra time. To your question, um, I would certainly suggest going to their public hearing.
That's the first I'm hearing of it.
I think we have a lot of options. We, we have a lot of options here, and one of the, is it fair to say, one of the questions that came up with the attorney who, um, was reviewing all of our, all the work that they've done so far on these articles was, well, most communities, when they present this, they have a strong feeling of how they want to see it end up.
I don't think we do.
And it, no, we don't, and I think that was, that was conveyed to her.
So you shouldn't assume that a select member of the committee is going to speak for everybody else, because it is a divisive issue, as.
Yep.
As witnessed at the special town meeting we had on this issue.
So, here's some things to think about.
Not the town being special, uh, yeah, the pre.
Yep.
Pre-meeting.
So here's some things to think about. The board of selectmen has not historically, up until recently, given their, um, opinion, their official voted opinion on any of the warrant articles. The understanding was that we were the ones placing them on the warrant, and so it had the de facto support of the board, and that was without even a vote, although someone could speak up in the dissent from the board, and that was fine. You're going to see that the finance committee, they're going to have an opinion on everything. They're going to vote their, how they feel, right? And there might, and there's a dissent vote as well. In this case, because the planning board is the one presenting them, we wouldn't be reading them. We absolutely can have a discussion about whether, when asked, you know, by the audience, if the board has a formal position, we can say yes or no. Here is the vote, they can hear from both sides if.
Not so much that we're pushing what we think, we want to make sure that what is presented at the town, the townspeople to vote, is not such a slanted or biased written choice for them.
Yeah, I felt like.
You know, that it's reasonable and.
I felt like it was pretty open-ended. It really could go either way, right?
Let's, let's see it.
I think that's one reason that they sent it to council.
Yeah.
To, to, you know, make it as, as broad and as unbiased as possible.
Can we see it this week, Bob?
Yep.
Thank you.
And I think it's important that then the public come out on the October twenty-third, right? Is there a public forum or public hearing on, to at least learn more information about?
I think it's going to be the same as what we had last time, but.
Well, I don't think that, that this will be an opportunity for vote, but it's an opportunity for questions and, I think.
Yeah, it's, it's an opportunity to really delve into the content of the.
What it means.
Possible bylaws. Yeah. Yeah.
And that's October twenty-third?
Yes.
Is that on the website? Because I saw that they had a bunch of cancellations, like.
Uh, they did. Um, I think that mostly had to do with roads.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, then I believe that that hearing is set for seven o'clock.
Thank you.
In the big room, I take it? Over there, big room?
Boy, that's a good question, it'd be helpful if I knew the location, huh?
It's here. It's here, right?
Uh, but speaking of all that, I did meet with the finance committee last week and did encourage them to meet with the planning board, that, with the number of articles potentially between roads and marijuana that will be coming, proposed from the planning board for the special. And speaking of that also, um, I did forward to the board, um, some proposed language for, and this is on the roads, for attorney certification, for some, um, information regarding road acceptance. So, uh, I mean, the reason for this is to try and get as much information as possible prior to town meeting on the state of the roads. I know the planning board is going to be having some site visits the end of this week to see the condition of the roads and hoping to not get, you know, for lack of a better term, jammed up just before town meeting. Trying to come to an understanding with the petitioners on what would be expected and when it's expected, in order to have the process go more smoothly, both before town meeting and then after town meeting if the roads are accepted. So, um, with the board's permission, I would, um, put that letter together and get it out to the petitioners.
Please do.
I think it makes sense, yeah. Thank you.
Also, um, we're rebidding the roof project, and, uh, that's already been advertised in the Worcester paper, and it'll be in the Central Register tomorrow. I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, all right.
Can I just?
Yeah, I do.
Sorry, can I just say a point of information? If you go on the town website and look at the web, um, the calendar, on the twenty-third, if you click on the notice of public hearing, it actually takes you to the proposed bylaws and, um, everything. So, just as a, I don't know if this is everything that you guys have, but.
No, and, and the full text isn't up yet.
Okay.
Hopefully they'll get that up, so people can read it online, because it's quite a bit.
You'll have all that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, all right, back quickly to the meeting minutes, if you don't mind. Two sets.
Motion to accept the minutes, meeting's Tuesday, September eighteenth, twenty eighteen. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to accept it Monday, September twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. New business, Agricultural Commission appointment. We have a letter from Jesse Quamen. And he's here. Could I have a motion, and would anyone like to speak with him?
Uh.
He's here.
Jesse, thank you, thank you for the letter and your, uh, interest, expression of interest. You kind of answered a lot of the key questions, what, you know, what do you, what do you do? You work closely with the animals, and what is your interest in serving on, on the board? So, still working at the Davis Farm?
Not currently.
Okay. But in, in the agriculture?
Yes, agriculture.
Good. Anything else we want to know that's not in the, in the letter?
Unless you have any specific questions for me.
And you've been serving as an alternate for the past year, so this...
Yes, sir.
You've been doing that, so we appreciate that too. Excellent. I think the motion will point. Jesse Clayman? Jesse Clayman, to the, to the agricultural, yeah. I second that.
Great. For the expiration of 2021. So Abby, this was a full term? 18.
The vacancy.
The vacancy.
Open expires 2021.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse.
We have a street sign request for the corner of Paddock and Bushy Lane stop signs. This has been reviewed by DPW Police and Fire and approved.
Where's the money coming from?
Well, I'm assuming it's within budget still at this point in the year.
No, I wanted to speak to Randy. Jesse? Yeah, make a motion to go fire. To install a stop sign at Paddock and Bushy Lane.
Okay.
In this section.
Sorry, I have a second.
Police and DPW approved?
Yep.
Second.
I just have a question. Is it four-way stops or is it a two-way stops? I, I mean, it doesn't say here.
Doesn't say.
It says stop signs. I'm thinking it's two-way. Actually, I don't know. Go either way.
I mean, and I assume that would be at the discretion of?
Yeah.
DPW Fire Police?
I, I, yeah, absolutely. We could certainly ask for clarification, and bear in mind, this is yet again a situation where you're talking about an intersection of a dead end that's heading towards 56 and a road that has both of its ends on 68, which means this is very directed towards only the residents. These are not throughways in any way, shape or form.
I would think just two signs.
You would think.
On Bushy Lane, probably.
Yeah. On Bushy and not Paddock.
Yeah, Paddock, no. Bushy is the secondary road by for you.
All in favor?
Aye.
There anybody else to come before the board?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, oh, he raised his hand.
Public comment, where in the public comment?
Just a quick question on the last thing, the sign.
Yes.
There's a 30 mile an hour sign that got posted on Paddock. I don't think I've ever seen anything that dramatic. People are going so slow on Paddock now, everybody goes by, I think they're going to pull into my yard to visit.
Really?
It's incredible how much that sign slowed everybody down.
Really?
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Myself included.
I wish all signs worked that well.
Right?
All right. Thank you.
It's encouraging.
It's good to hear.
It is. It's astounding.
Magic.
Let us know how long it lasts.
Or if you were actually being serious, because I'm not...
I've had people doing better than 50 miles an hour in front of my house before, and I haven't seen any of that.
Good.
That's good to hear.
Yeah, it's good.
Surprised you weren't. There was a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Record.
Aye.